On your call, Council President.
Let's proceed.
Good evening, everyone. Please stand and salute the flag.
Our country is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to public laws nineteen seventy-five, chapter two-three-one. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trenton Times, the Trentonia newspapers, posted on the First Ward Golden Board in City Hall, filed the City Clerk's office, and posted to the City of Trenton website. Formal action will be taken. Roll call. Councilwoman Edwards. Councilwoman Feliciano.
Present.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Present.
Councilwoman Williams.
Present.
Council President Frisby.
Present.
Myself, Brandon Merser, municipal clerk, present. And for Mr. Wesley Burgess, Scott McGee, Assistant Intercity Attorney, and Mr. Collogeus, excused from this meeting this evening. And, Council President, if you wish, I can read the invocation.
Yes, please.
Almighty God, who holds the faith of man and nation, we most humbly beseech thee to bless this, our city, these deliberations, and these thy servants, that they may act with wisdom and understanding for the good of our community and thy greater glory. Amen. Okay. And, Council President, as I understand, we have some presentations and recognitions. On the agenda tonight, we have our Boy State Scholars, and I believe the assignment was brought about by Councilwoman Williams.
Excellent.
I believe that to you to present.
Thank you very much. So, what we wanted to do this evening at City Council is honor the seven young boys, young men, we mentioned, who attended Boy State this past summer in June at Rider University. And before we do that, just want to read a little proclamation before, but it actually gives more information about the American Legion and the program itself. So, since nineteen forty-six, the American Legion of Jersey Boys has been committed to educating the youth of New Jersey about American civics, democratic process, and fighting to preserve those ideals, to better serve our great state of New Jersey, and continues to foster an environment that welcomes, accepts, and champions diverse viewpoints, cultures, and identities, ensuring that each staff member and delegate to the program are afforded equal opportunities to flourish. American Legion of Jersey Boys State endeavors to make the organization equitable representation of the state of New Jersey and the many cultures, races, identities, orientations, thoughts, and viewpoints that make our state great. American Legion Jersey Boys State and its illustrious sixty-seven-year history and the state of New Jersey and its youth have seen over fifty-five thousand delegates. That's a great number of young men who've come through the program. The delegates to the program have come in as the best and brightest from across the state, and they leave with a lasting impression as a result of their college-level seminar. Recently, Rider University has begun offering each of the Boy State members, scholars, three college credits for their participation. So, the young men before you very likely have three college credits waiting for them when they go off to college soon. Many delegates apply the lessons learned at the program, go on to serve their communities as members of the military, civil servants, teachers, doctors, leaders of businesses, and many other respectable careers. Such famous alumni of the program include United States Senator Cory Booker, Supreme Court Justice Samuel Alito, New Jersey Governor Chris Christie, United States Congressman Leonard Lance, our current Trenton Mayor and former Assemblyman Reed Guisiora, New Jersey Assemblyman Dan Benson, and Hamilton Township Mayor Jeff Martin. And before we announce the boys' names and such, I also want to pay tribute to Mr. Smith and Mr. Leroy for the American Legion of Both Can Stand Up, for all the hard work you do, as well as Commander, Chief Director, Mr. Smith. Thank you for everything you do. Mr. Smith is a veteran of the Vietnam War. Ms. Leroy is a veteran of the Iraq War. And to any veterans in this room or currently serving and their families, thank you all for your service to our country. So, if I could, I'd like to ask Councilwoman Feliciano if she could actually read the proclamation on the certificate for the young men. Do you have it underneath that one? If you could take a moment, since it's not... That's underneath that folder. Yes, ma'am. If you could read that for us.
Thank you.
Okay. The City Council of Trenton, this certificate of recognition is presented to, and it will have each of your names on it, New Jersey Boy State Scholars representing American Legion Post Number One Eighty-two, Trenton, New Jersey. For representing our city of Trenton and your great achievements as scholars and great leaders in the state of New Jersey, we congratulate and celebrate you. Congratulations. And we'll be giving the boys their certificates in a moment. Mike Adas, Paul Avanzar, Darren Cracken, hope I pronounced that correct, Andre Diaz, Stiles Dodd, Edwin Maracón, Jonathan Martinez, and Victor Tejada. If each one of you could come up and tell us for a minute or two what your experience was like at Boy State and what it meant to you.
So, at Boy State, we had a lot of fun. We had a lot of things going on there at Boy State. We learned about a lot in the seminars. Some of us, you know, would fall asleep and stuff like that, but we learned something from it. We learned about government, how the government works as a whole. Learned careers, what jobs you want to do, and so many things you can do. And they show that you can be anything at Boy State.
Good evening. So, Boy State, I think more younger people should get it, should be in it, might should participate, because it teaches you a lot about how the actual government works. And it also, the seminars are very informative, like, they teach you a lot, like, there is, like, if you want to be an electrician, if you want to be a doctor, if you want to be in the military, if you want to go to college, something like that. Even, there was a college run there, too. So, there are several colleges go, and they give you information about, like, they give you information about, like, how people apply and a lot of things.
Good evening. My name is Edin. Before Boy State, for me, it was really game-changing because my eyes really were open to the really good ideas that each seminar really gave to us. And they really showed us how much the world gives us as Americans, and how much the world can be more dependent on many young men looking for those, to succeed in those careers in the near future.
Good evening. My name is Andre. It's a pleasure to meet you. Boy State was, I would say, was a very positive benefit and also experience to all of us and to me. It educated all of us very well. It also helped me decide on my future, which is to become a United States Marine for Aviation. Before I joined Boy State, I was at a confused path. I didn't know what I would want to do in the future. I met some very well-respectful men that taught me, showed me what I was willing to do and what I enjoyed to do. Boy State will always be a benefit to young men, and I would say it's a very good experience, a very important experience.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Boy State for me was a, it's a milestone in my life. It gave me the perspective that I, that I have to make up and actually do the things that I want to do. I can be what I'm trying to be, but I have to actually do it. That is, that's what Boy State means to me, and that's what I got from it. Of course, with all the other things that my fellow peers have said that were true, it was more, it was much more personal to me as a scholar of Boy State.
We actually have one more presentation, and it'll be followed up by a resolution. And this is a special one, so a resolution honoring Joe Testa, oh, Joe, Joe Testa, I'm sorry, Joe Festa, Joe, I am really proud to have got that. Joe is, of course, the mayor of Warren Street. And he's always been a great ambassador of our city, as everyone knows. So, I'll read right away. Whereas the Trenton City Council wishes to recognize Joe Festa as a recognized and respected community leader affectionately known as the Mayor of Warren Street. And whereas Joseph Angelo Festa was born October twenty-first, nineteen thirty-five, the son of proud parents Sylvester and Rose Festa, both of Italian heritage, Joe grew up on Wilson Street, not far from where the historic Battle Monument is located. After residing in that home for a few years, the Festa family moved to Brunswick Avenue, towards the northern part of the city, the North Ward, thank you. And whereas Joe, in his early years, held many different jobs, including roofing, running a billiards room, and working in a pork roll plant. Didn't know that. It was not until his late twenties when he would decide that he needed a legitimate job that he pondered the idea of learning a trade. Joe landed himself a job at Brownies, a local barber shop on South Warren Street, where he would spend fifteen years honing his craft. Eventually, he and a friend of his, Carmen, would invest in her own barber shop across the street from Brownies, which became the home of State Barber Shop. And whereas nothing is more important to Joe than his family, Joe's been married for fifty-six years and has three beautiful daughters, all college graduates, and amazing professions, at which you might hear him boast that he paid for three universities on a barber's salary. And six wonderful grandchildren ranging from ages nine to twenty-five. And whereas, if you want to know how special Joe is, just spend a few minutes in his barber chair. It is not about the haircut, though the haircut is exceptional, but it is about the way that Joe makes you feel about yourself. His customers will tell you that talking to Joe is better than seeing a therapist. Joe says the secret to life is finding the good in people. He will also tell you that he hasn't had a bad day in eighty-five years, and thanks God every day when he wakes up. And whereas, driving or walking down South Warren Street, you can find Joe in his normal spot, probably sunning outside in a chair if there are no customers, or reading a book. Joe is a staple of Warren Street and the downtown community, hence why the nickname Mayor of Warren Street seems to most fit. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the City Council, the City of Trenton, County of Mercer, State of New Jersey, recognize the Mayor of Warren Street, Joe Festa.
At this time, our council members are going to come down, and we're going to take a picture first with gentlemen, and then with the Mayor of Warren Street, in that order. Thank you. All right, Mr. Garcia, let's proceed. We want to have Mr. Willie Smith, did you want to have a word on behalf of the troops before we proceed, and then we would make room also for Joe to give his remarks.
Certainly.
On the behalf of the American Legion, and I represent, One Eighty-two for Boy State, this is my fifteen years, and I just want to invite the City Council as a whole, give honor to Councilwoman Williams. She spoke, and we invite you to come down, and I'll be seeing you that Monday. Boy State is every Father Day, starts on that Father Day Sunday. I left you a brochure that you ladies and gentlemen could look through to see the work that's put in for Boy State and what the young men's went through. I'm always looking for sponsors, because we have no limit on how many young men we can send from Trenton. So, if any business or individual would like to sponsor a young man, I would just speak for the men to go to Boy State. Boy State, we try to get back up to two thousand young men throughout the state. And on the inner-city, and I'd like to get more of my young men's inner-city to take part in the program. So, I leave you with that, and I hope to see some of y'all come out to Boy State individually to see what it's all about. All volunteer veterans throughout the whole state and alumni, they come back together, a week of their time and vacation to work with these young men, and they do it. Now, I staff, they put the program together, the IT, everything is on the computer with the parents now, the father, the track the kids, their daily progress, what their class is in, where they end, all that. So, it's the end of twenty-one century now. They don't, like I said, everything in the whole program is all volunteer. Nobody gets paid, not a single person.
Thank you so much, sir. Joe, if we yield to you, if you would like to say anything, this is your moment there on Warren Street. That's you.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
I want to thank everybody here for honoring me like this. It only took me sixty years to, I must say, start. Yeah, but what we're doing here is, I've never had a bad day in sixty years on Warren Street. And when they talk about Trenton, Trenton, our country started here right on the double. We're from a great city, and we're about team effort on Warren Street. Winners never quit, losers, of course, always lose. But I'm so proud to be from a city from Trenton, to send my kids to college. I'm going to send my grandkids to college. I owe a lot to this city, but it's time, it's time to give it back. We are not winning enough. I love this city. God bless all of you.
Mr. Garcia?
Certainly, Madam President. Madam President, as I understand it, we have another resolution, a resolution that we may want to put for roll call if, and I understand there's a possible motion from the council, councilman for this resolution.
That is correct.
If that councilperson would like to put forth a motion to approve Resolution Twenty-three-Dash-Four-seventy-one, recently added to your, to your ballot.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And Mr. Clerk. I'd like to make a motion for Resolution Twenty-three-Dash-Four-seventy-one. It's a resolution that will authorize the additional name of Joe Festa Way to South Warren Street between East Front Street and Lafayette Street. Whereas Joe Festa raised in the North Ward of the City of Trenton, and whereas Joe Festa in his early years had many different jobs, including roofing, and working at a pork roll plant until his late twenties, he decided to learn a trade. And whereas in the nineteen sixties, Joe began a job at Brownies Barber Shop on South Warren Street, and began to learn his trade and master his craft, and fifteen years later, opened his own shop across the street that is now home to the State Barber Shop. And whereas spending a few minutes in Joe's barber shop is not just about a haircut, but the way Joe makes you feel about yourself, and he will tell you that the secret to life is finding the good in people. And whereas if you traveled South Warren Street over the last fifty years, you will see Joe sitting outside when he does not have a customer in his chair, either enjoying the sun or reading a book while greeting everyone that walks by earning the nickname Mayor of Warren Street. And whereas the City of Trenton believes that placing the additional name of Joe Festa Way to South Warren Street between East Front Street and Lafayette Street is a fitting way to honor Joe. And whereas the City Council of the City of Trenton agrees that Joe Festa is deserving of this honor, now, therefore, be it now resolved that the City Council of the City of Trenton authorize the additional name of Joe Festa Way to South Warren Street.
Thank you all. And, Council President, I need a second to that motion.
A second, please.
It's been moved in second. I'll call the roll. Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Frisby.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you very much. And on your call, Madam President, we can roll.
Let's proceed, please.
Certainly. Madam President, moving on to, if it's your wish, we can have a public comment for any agenda items at this time. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to any items on the agenda?
You have two hands in the back?
I see we do. Please come forward.
Thank you. I appreciate this. Most of you know me from taking pictures, also building downtown on South Warren Street. That's where I really got to know Joe. Sorry. That's where I really got to know Joe. For the last seven years, he's been a great neighbor, and I am proud to call him a friend in those seven years. And in those seven years, I got to know him intimately, and what a great person he is, the challenges he faced throughout his life, which brought him to where he's at today. It's a testament what a great person he is, and how a kid from Trenton can succeed. And we need those stories, and, you know, we're making them down there and throughout the city. So, just, you know, thank you, thank you very much for this. It means a lot to me. It means a lot to Joe. Shouldn't be crying. So, thank you very much. It's Joe's eighty-eighth birthday on Saturday. I want to say thank you and happy birthday, and I plan on having a celebration to honor him for this, this great achievement and what has happened without all of you, especially Councilwoman Jen Williams, Jennifer Williams, and Anthony Santore also. So, thank you. And on a side note, it's great to see, you know, pieces of council finally working together and really tackling some issues. Congratulations.
Yeah, like, did you want to say anything or?
I just, yeah, just sort of, not.
You got all the way up here to the mic. All the way.
So, my name is Lisa Festa Hayden. I always made sure I kept that included in my name. And I'm one of the lucky daughters. I had a whole thing I thought I was going to have to say to you about my dad, but I see that that's really not necessary. I would just, like, thank the council for acknowledging the over sixty years of good that my father has done on that street. He goes every day still, six AM in the morning, even my mom up at five fifteen, with a smile on his face. We were raised to be kind and grateful and to have pride in the city of Trenton. Don't let anyone speak in a, in a negative way about the city of Trenton in front of any of our family, and that's thanks to the pride that's been instilled in us by our fathers. So, for all the good that he's done, for all the people he's helped, for all the haircuts and kids he's gotten ready for interviews and books written about him. There's a woman that walked by the shop every day who had cancer. He didn't even know. He just greeted her every day, was nice to her, and she wrote a book how he motivated, he changed her life, he gave her hope. That's like one of probably a thousand stories about my dad. And to see you acknowledge him like this for the street love. And to see you acknowledge him like this for the street he loves, the city he loves, we're just really grateful, so thank you very much.
Are there any other members of the vote that wish to speak on any agenda item?
On the agenda.
On an agenda item?
Yes, on the agenda.
They're located in the back. And there will be a public comment for any items not pertaining to the docket at this time as well. You're welcome.
Good evening, Council President, Vice President and Council members.
Good evening.
I noticed there's an item on the docket for leasing of Thel Street and I do appreciate that because that building has been closed for a long time and the grass has always been overgrown and, you know, I mean, vagrants have been going in the building. So I'm very, very happy that they're planning to lease it out for a functional program. When I saw that, Passage Theater has been without a lease for as long as I've known. And, and they have requested a 10-year lease, which enables them to apply for larger grants. And they do schedule and participate in a lot of the programs for our children in the city. So I would urge all of you to get together with the administration and say, we need a lease for Passage Theater. If you're going to give leases out to properties that have to be fixed up with no guarantee that they're going to be able to afford to fix it up, then I think you need to work with a functioning, viable program in arts for our children. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Will we be doing seven comments later?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other members of the vote that wish to speak on any agenda item only? Seeing none, Madam President, if you could proceed.
Let's proceed, please.
Certainly, moving on through the docket at this time. Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve communications and petitions?
We have a motion to approve, please move.
Second.
It's been moved in second, I'll call the roll, Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving on to ordinances for second reading in public hearing. Ordinance 23-048, ordinance amending Chapter 146 of Code of the City of Trenton and supplementing various redevelopment plans and the land development ordinance to permit cannabis uses. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
Madam Motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Feliciano.
Can I, may I ask a question first?
Certainly.
Sorry, Madam President?
Discussion.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Just real quick, I have noted on here, notation, it said it went to Planning Board, minor comments, Planning Board meeting was the next day with updates for council. Did that Planning Board happen? Do we have the updates, the minor updates?
Yeah, I can speak to that and the updates were extremely minor. I don't have them at the ready, but it was basically typos, spaces in between words. Overall, they supported the ordinance as it pertains to, particularly what they were tasked with reviewing, which was the zoning changes that were being made. So there was no substantive comments that the Planning Board had and they supported the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Noted, Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 23-059, ordinance creating the position of Principal Male Clerk in the Department of Water and Sewer, fixing the salary range therefore and setting forth certain regulations for the implementation of the same. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
Madam Motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes, please.
Certainly, Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving on to consent agenda. Resolutions 23-451, 453, 454, 455, 456, 457, 458, 459, 461, 462, 463, 464, 469 for consent agenda. Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
Madam Motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in second, I'll call the roll, Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving on to roll call resolutions. Resolution 23-04, excuse me, 23-449, Resolution of the City Council of Trenton, New Jersey authorizing the execution of legal services agreement related to PFAS litigation services.
Madam Motion.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in second, I'll call the roll, Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution 23-450, a resolution certifying that the City Council, the City Council of the City of Trenton reviewed the corrective action plan for the city's transition year 2021 audit.
Madam Motion.
So move.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution 23-452, resolution authorizing settlement of civil action in the matter of Fiat West Sue versus City of Trenton in an amount of $150,000.
Madam Motion.
So move.
Second.
I'm sorry, was it second?
Yeah.
Thank you. Council, roll call, Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution 23-465, resolution from the City of Trenton supporting the application of OAHS Brunswick Village LLC for aspire funding from the State of New Jersey Economic Development Authority for rehabilitation of a 110-unit affordable housing development.
Madam Motion.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in second, I'll call the roll, Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution 23-466, resolution authorizing the Planning Board of the City of Trenton to hear and review a proposed new land development ordinance pursuant to NJSA 4055D1 et cetera.
Madam Motion.
So move.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution 23-467, resolution authorizing the creation of an ad hoc committee of the City Council to consult and work with the administration on disbursement of funds under the American Rescue Plan Act.
Madam Motion.
So move.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution 23-468, a resolution certifying that the City Council of the City of Trenton reviewed the correction action, corrective action plan for the city's transition year 2021, state and federal, single audit.
Madam Motion.
So move.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution 23-470, a resolution condemning the attack by Hamas on the people of Israel.
Madam Motion.
So move.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion carried. We have a walk-on resolution, Council President, and that is Resolution 23-472, a resolution appointing members to the Trenton zoning, Trenton zoning board of adjustment. If you want to ask for a motion to approve?
Madam Motion.
So move.
Second.
Madam President?
Roll call, I'm sorry.
May I read the actual resolutions, the list, the names of the appointees?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Madam President. So Resolution 23-472, a resolution appointing members to Trenton zoning board of adjustment. Whereas the zoning board of adjustment was created pursuant to NJSA 4050D69 et cetera and whereas members shall be residents of the city of Trenton and shall be appointed by the City Council. The term of each regular member shall be four years and the term of each alternate member shall be two years. And whereas vacancies currently exist on a zoning board of adjustment due to the resignation of Carol Graff as well as open alternate positions. And now therefore it be resolved by the governing body of the city of Trenton and the county of Mercer, State of New Jersey, that alternate number one Caitlin Fair is hereby appointed to the Trenton zoning board of adjustment to fill the unexpired term of Carol Graff ending December 30th, 2024. Alternate number two Carmen Rodriguez is hereby appointed to fill the unexpired term of Caitlin Fair ending December 30th, 2023. Alternate number two Ed Wangren is hereby appointed to the Trenton zoning board of adjustment to fill the unexpired term of Carmen Rodriguez ending December 30th, 2024. Shonda McCallum is hereby appointed to the Trenton zoning board of adjustment as alternate number three for a two-year term ending December 30th, 2024. And then finally, Tenille McKinney is hereby appointed to the Trenton zoning board of adjustment as alternate number four for a two-year term ending December 30th, 2024.
Thank you.
I apologize, Madam President, so I understand, as I understand it and Mr. Culber can explain very quickly as to the amendment I think that needs to be made to the resolution if you, Mr. Culber, if you would please.
Sorry about that, for alternate number one, we just threatened that it's to fill the unexpired term of Caitlin Fair, but Caitlin Fair's term is expired, the date used to write out is June 23.
23.
So that should be go to June 25 probably. June, whatever, June 24, June 25, which are either way, either way.
Thank you.
And Mr. Culber, just so I understand, the zoning board at some point will be moving to a calendar year supposed to go fiscal?
We would very much appreciate that, I believe that the City Council would have to make that change.
The resolution is anticipating that change, just so you know for the December. Any something to add for the terms?
That would be wonderful.
Sounds great. So with the amendment, Council, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
Madam Motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Thank you, I'll call the roll, Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you very much. Onto ordinances for first reading and introduction. Ordinance 23-60, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property identified on the city tax map as 316 North Clinton Avenue, block 1701, lot 32 pursuant to NJSA 4812-13B5 to Carmen Montalvo for the sum of $3,000.
Do we have questions?
Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve?
I'm demanding a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Frisbee.
Yes.
Ordinance 23-61, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property identified on the city tax map as 81 Summer Street, block 4,301, 41 pursuant to NJSA 4812-13B5 to Ed E. Kelly for the sum of $5,700.
Madam Motion.
So move.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 23-62, an ordinance authorizing the city of Trenton to enter into a 10-year lease agreement for city-owned property commonly known as 27th Thel Street to the Trenton Professional Old Timers Association, a New Jersey nonprofit corporation pursuant to NJSA 4812-15 et cetera. I'm sorry, my apologies, that is pulled by administration. Thank you and we're sorry that I made it there. In that case, Madam President, I'm all done with the ordinances and resolutions. And if it's your wish, we could move to public comment.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chu. First person for public comment I have here is, is that Willie Say? I'm sorry, I can't read this in right here. Somebody want to help me? Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. He's gone?
Yes.
How about Leon Crawford? How about Rashawn Santana?
There he comes.
Rashawn Santana? Okay, got you, thank you. And just so everyone knows, public comment will be, has a 55-minute limit. Please do understand it's not Q and A session, so the council is not obliged to respond to you, but you will have five minutes, you may address whatever you wish. Please do state your name and address for the record.
My name is Rashawn Santana, 210 Dayton Street, Trenton. I don't know if this is the right time or, you know, or who are the ones that even, this is my first time, so. I moved to Trenton, purchased a home a year ago. Read a lot of good things that are upcoming for the city. I wasn't born here, but I was raised here as a juvenile. Moved back to Pennsylvania in my teenage years, but, you know, and now I found my home here. But a couple of things that bothered me that I've noticed. Recently, there's some, you know, and I gotta congratulate the city for all the infrastructure things that are going on and, you know, everything has been approved going forward. But I noticed something recently where Layler Street was just completely redundant, paved, brand new. And then, a couple of months later, they're tearing it all up, putting new gas pipes and water lines, which I love, don't get me wrong, but the process is a complete waste of funds, you know, brimshot, gone. That's one. Two, my street, Dayton Street, is a, it's pretty much a cut-through street from Layler to South. I have two stop signs. I have a school across the street. Mine's won't be a highway. Because four streets from Layler to the end of the school, there's no stop signs. I literally walked. I literally walk to people's houses if I notice the car on a regular basis, and I go and confront them about their speed. I have children, I have one here with me tonight, they play out on sidewalk, they play over in the school. Since I've been there this year, I've seen more than eight accidents, motorcycles, vehicles. I've even seen some near misses where some people actually drive through the intersection into the school grounds just not to get hit. That's a big issue for me. Outside of that, keep up the good work, and, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Santana.
We'll be with everybody in one moment. Order for the cell, yeah, there we go. Thank you so much. We have here, is that Butch Osterman? Oh, well, they've all gone, okay. Ms. Colber Wilson.
Good evening again. First of all, I want to thank, and I want to thank my councilwoman for recognizing Joe and the Boys' Stage Scholars, that's an incredible program, and I would recommend that when Willie invites you, that you at least get an opportunity to go there and see how these kids learn to deal with life. I wasn't here for the Tuesday meeting and all the discussion around the animal shelter. And I'm still very distressed because I go on social media and I see all these accusations of an employee breeding dogs at the shelter, selling dogs at the shelter. I have a hard time believing that, but I really think it needs to be looked into so that we can clear it up and put an end to the rumors. If you just ignore it, they're going to stay and they're going to grow, so this is the problem with the animal shelter, nobody pays attention to what's going on in that building. I don't know who's supposed to supervise, because they have a lot of field trips they have to make, they have to go out and pick up dogs and service complaints, and when you don't have a management staff in there that has the credentials and the background to be working with animals and volunteers and staff, you're going to have chaos. It's just as simple as that, and I'm just not going to let this go. I don't want to go out there and be this angry, crazy cat, dog lover. I'm very concerned about the health of this city, I'm very concerned about the health issues involving the animal shelter, and you all need to really start paying attention. I wish someone would get back to me, I'm always offered my services to help out in whatever way I can, but we need to do something about these minds that we're getting because we're over capacity. There are solutions out there, I don't know who's looking for them, I don't, you know, we're paying private entities money, paying more money to take dogs than we're going to pay a nonprofit to help us foster dogs and to get them adopted. So none of it's making any sense, but just by ignoring it, it's not going to go away, this has been going on for decades. And I'm sick and tired of that animal shelter being an afterthought in this city doing business, it's just like Bell Street, you said it's pulled, they were getting a ten-year lease, Patsy's Theater has been asking for a ten-year lease for about ten years, and they do incredible work at that theater, you know, and, you know, so, please, everybody, please try and get your priorities straight, I'm hopeful with this new council that you will talk together and you will work with the administration and you will have these things taken care of. I couldn't get it done because of the elements that I had to deal with. So, you know, this is just, you know, I mean, if I go to the shelter, I can't go in and look around, they won't let me in, I'm not an elected official anymore. So I want to be able to be on some sort of committee that permits me to do that, and I'll check it out. Because I am very concerned about all these stray animals running around this city, all these animals being dropped off, these animals are not being taken care of properly, you can't have a dog in the cage for hours on end, their bones atrophying.
Thank you, Mr. Colber.
I'm also, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Just one more thing I want to say before I step down is that I think it's very rude for this body without prior notice to the public to get up and walk out for a photo walk. I just don't think that's appropriate, and I think you either need to notify the public when you're going to do that, I understand they have to leave after the recognition, but you can all line up here, not one clump, but I think it's rude just to get up and walk out, so.
Thank you.
That's just my opinion, thank you.
Ronald McMullin. Okay.
How you doing today, Council?
Good, thank you.
Yeah, my name is Clayton Holly, I work for the City of Trenton, I worked for Ashley in South of East. I'm just asking today if it's possible that-
I'm sorry, Mr. Clayton Holly, you're speaking, and we called Ma'am, so-
He's gone.
I thought Mr. McMullin, yes. You want, you wish to go after him? Yes. Got it. Very well.
Yeah, we're just off today.
Okay, good.
My name is Clayton Holly, I work for the City of Trenton, I work for South of East Division, I'm just asking on today if it's possible that we get an investigation in our department based on the way that the leadership is running the department. Been with the city twenty-one years, had no real infractions, but for some, our recent leadership that we got, we're having a lot of issues, so I'm just asking if it's possible if they can be some level of investigation about the department. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. McMullin.
Good happy, Mr. McMullin.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Good evening, Crystal, Hannah, Council President Teska, yes, Joe, I met you maybe once or twice, but nice to meet you, and of course, Josh, of course. Just wanted to say, it's my first time here since you guys have been in office, I think you guys are doing an excellent job in moving the city in a new direction. It's my first time here since you guys have been in office, and from what I'm reading, what I'm seeing, the things that's happening in the city, you guys are doing an excellent job, complete one-eighty from what we had the last time, so good job, keep up the good work. But the reason why I'm here is, I'm Ronald McMullin, I am the president of Ask Me, New Jersey Council sixty-three, and I do represent workers here in the City of Trenton, Local two-two-eight-six, under President Ramona Thomas. The last brother who spoke, my brother Clayton, he just mentioned there was some issues with their supervisor, supervisor, Gene Claude Strickland. Over the last several months, I've been getting probably thirty, forty calls that this guy is exhibiting extreme disrespect, exhibiting unprofessionalism. Just to start, my brothers from the South of East stand up, they're here because these brothers want to come out, it's their first council meeting, so these brothers, they do a great job in the city, I want to say that your South of East department, three years ago, these brothers was heroes. In twenty-twenty, these brothers was out there in the snow, out there in the cold weather, out there in the rain, out there when it was possible they would catch COVID and take it home to their families, so they was actually risking their health to provide a service to the city that all of us who live in the city definitely appreciate, these guys doing an excellent job. But this supervisor or superintendent, Gene Claude Strickland, I just want to run down a list of notes that I've been taking over the last several months, he disciplined over thirty or forty of our members unjustified, I mean, for silly reasons. He don't let employees use their sick time, he denies them dedication in their sick requests. He disciplines employees without following the proper procedure, he disciplines them and suspends them on the spot. If you follow civil service rules, when a person is disciplined with suspension, there's a due process, meaning they're entitled to a representative, they're entitled to a hearing, they're entitled to a mutual hearing officer to look over the case or hear the case, and then make a decision to determine whether it's upheld or it's vindicated, but he suspends people on the spot, he suspends somebody that they on the spot immediately. He videotapes, today he videotaped employees that came to work, they come to work at six in the morning, he pulls his phone out and videotapes them going in and out, saying, "Look, look, they may be late, I don't know why he does this." Oh yes, this is true, these guys, in the summertime, it's ninety degrees outside, these guys come to work ten, fifteen minutes early so they can get the work, so they can be done before the sun hits its max, he doesn't allow them in. He said, "You can't come in here till six o'clock," I mean, it's, you're talking, it's five fifty-eight and thirty seconds, and you can't come in to prepare to go out to provide a service to the city residents. Oh yeah, this is what's happening, our people that's on light duty, this is a violation of HIPAA laws, the doctor tells them, "You can't do this, you can't do that, or you must come to a therapist or to the doctor on Wednesday or Thursday." He calls the doctor up himself, clear violation of HIPAA laws, he actually went to the doctor office to change the appointment of a person's therapy appointment, said, "No, I don't want him going on Tuesdays, he need to go on Wednesdays after three," that's a clear violation of HIPAA laws. The supervisor is not supposed to have nothing to know about your medical condition or your harm, except the HR and yourself, but he clearly violates the HIPAA violations. I know my time is up, but I want to just say that these workers, and all we're asking for you to do is to use your authority to conduct some type of internal investigations, and I'm saying, you cannot only talk to these workers, you can talk to the secretaries, I spoke to three secretaries, he just respects the secretaries in the office, you can talk to them. And my last point is that a portion who supervises people often knows and understands the job of the people who they're supervising, because if you know and understand the job of the people you're supervising, you can respect what they do. This guy, from what I researched, was a math teacher from the school system.
Thank you.
According to civil service, you must have five years experience, this guy-
I have another individual which is eligible, I'll move on to Alzaniere Upsher. Mr. Upsher. Moving on to Vanessa Sullivan.
Hello, good evening, City Council, it's my pleasure to be here tonight, and I want everybody to know that I don't come out just to come out. I brought something, I don't know if anybody seen, this is the new Trenton Journal that just was published, and it's a beautiful picture of City Council here with some children. Now, last night, when I was getting out of school at Mercer County, about nine-thirty, I was walking home, one of the young men in this picture, his brothers were both at the liquor store, about nine-forty-five, come to find out, this family is homeless and living at the budget end. I don't know if you was aware of that, but these children's mother didn't even know they was going to be in this magazine and taking that photo with you guys, but like I said, they are currently living at the budget end right now. That's the first one. Another thing, I've been hearing a lot about the animal shelter, I love animals, I got two puppies at home, I love it, but I've also been working at the high school as a part of the street team, a safe passage member, working with a lot of the children, come to find out, a lot of our students are homeless as well, don't have anywhere to go, and they keep pushing, "Send them to the rec center, send them to the rec center," what time do the rec center close? Eight, nine o'clock. So these children are literally on the streets all night, when I see them in the morning, I seen a young man, he has the same clothes on from the day before, what's going on? Having problems at home, don't have nowhere to stay at, don't have another way to go. I would like to invite the City Council to my home, as you all know, I recently purchased the home from the city. When I leave here tonight, I will have no running water, I have no walls, I have no floor, I have no heat, I have waited so patiently, very patiently, and I just want to, I just want to know, like, what is going on? We were so concerned about animals and different things, I work as a home health aide, I get paid fourteen-ten an hour, when the pandemic came, I never got a raise, I never got a pat on the shoulder, I never got nothing, I got a letter that I was supposed to show to the police when I got called over to say what I was doing out there, so I commend these men for what they're doing, but if you didn't know, the COVID is still hitting, and will I go back to work as a home health aide? I don't know, why? Why should I put my life at risk? When, when I did put my life at risk, nobody appreciated me, nobody said anything, all they talked about was the nurses, the doctors, they never said a word about the home health aide. I was in New York Times Magazine in two thousand and eighteen, talking about the same thing, jobs, poverty, all these things. I'm still waiting around, and another thing is, y'all, the city booked me on the front page of the Trentonian for the new beginnings program, and I'm sure a lot of everybody's seen that, so when you do something like that, the community is coming to me, asking me all these questions, "Ms. Sullivan, what's going on? What's going on with the houses? What can we do? How can we be a part of it?" We had a town hall with the U.S. Attorney General, I went up there, just like I did doing tonight, made a few comments, got a phone call, "You better know your place, know your place." Well, I said, "My place is right here in front of this microphone," letting y'all know and letting people know that the poor people here in America, the ones that I represent, we got a voice too, and we want to be heard too, and we're tired, literally, thank you.
Elijah. I'm not sure glad. Good? Yes, sir. Steve Clay.
Good evening, Steve Clay, Wolf Pet Road, Hamilton Township. Trenton as a city has never done anything to control the influx of animals into the shelter, not in the area of animal control, vaccination, licensing, animal cruelty, not to help people who are being displaced from their homes, people will die, people will have to move or resolutely leave their home leaving these animals behind. As for today, we're obviously overstuffed at the shelter, and Tuesday night, we heard the director come in with her plane. First step was take away opportunities to get those animals out of their life, dismiss volunteers, limit what they can see, what they can do, and then dance around the technicality of whether or not you're a shelter or pound, and use that justification to make what she calls a tough decision, it's not a tough decision, it's another in a series of lazy, easy decisions that led to this, and her solution now is the- And her solution now is the, and it's not a tough decision, let's call it what it is, the mass slaughter of more than ninety dogs, followed by the weekly slaughter of any other dogs that come into that place and remain there more than seven days. Now, a lot of volunteers, including myself, were given this dismissal letter with still no reason. She came here, still did not answer that question. Law Department made an investigation, and we still got no answer. But Ms. Richardson gave us a clue. On Tuesday night, she said, "I got a letter. I got an email from an organization telling the ci-- an organization telling the city that we need to cut ties with certain people because they were being harassed by some of the volunteers to the point that this organization, which is a 501(c)(3) that has been very valuable." And she goes on to question, volunteers questioned what's happening with that money. So I have to question, why is the city taking orders from a nonprofit organization? And if we look back from the shelter's page, a city-run page, back in June, the city specifically endorsed this nonprofit for their extraordinary transparency and commitment. And then they directed people to donate to this nonprofit to help the city pay its bills to yardly animals. How is that not a huge legal liability and conflict of interest? Because now, anybody that's questioned that nonprofit has been told, "You can't go to the shelter no more." That's a serious problem. The, the rest of it is, I know I'm going to wrap it up. I did kind of abbreviate some of this, but I... My point is, um, and not to take away from those or, or the lady who wanted them, it's something else. Besides the, the control of the finances of the city, the greatest power council has is the investigatory, investigatory authority. And where that comes, the responsibility. We've, we've heard a lot of back and forth. We've heard a lot of unfounded accusations in, in Ms. Richardson's words, to eliminate the liability to the city. But she's done exactly the opposite. And I won't speak for the other volunteers, but I'll speak for me. She's opened up the city to defamation lawsuits. She's opened it up to some criminal investigation potentially for what's going on with this nonprofit, with the money, with the treatment of volunteers, with the violation of their rights to actually enter a public building. So I'm asking council to please consider actually doing an investigation, not the homework that Ms. Richardson claimed she did without talking to anybody except her employees, and not the supposed investigation done by the law department, who also didn't talk to anybody that was accused.
Thank you, Mr. Clay.
Thank you.
I'll comment at this time. If you want to move to civic comment?
Yes, please. I'm sorry. Councilwoman Gonzalez has something in mind.
I know the young lady wanted to say something earlier. I'm not sure if she still wanted to say something, just inside.
Oh, the, oh, yeah, yes, ma'am.
They said, "I have a card of the young lady's spoken to me, so I'm calling her to take care of it."
Yeah, well, okay. As long as you get up.
I'm Miss Brown.
I know, I know exactly where you are. It's Brown.
Thank you, Councilwoman. That was thoughtful.
All right. Uh, without further ado, Madam President, wherever you'd like to, uh, wherever you'd like to start for public time.
If we could start with Council, uh, Council Vice President, please.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
So, Madam President, if I may, due to time and scheduling, I'd like to defer to Councilwoman Gonzalez to speak it first.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Fetha? Uh, thank you. Um, thank you all for being present, first of all. And, um, I just want to say congratulations once again to, uh, the, to the Voice State and also Mr. Joe. They are very well deserving of being acknowledged. Thank Councilwoman Williams for bringing that to us. Um, also, really quickly, I'm not going to be long, but, um, so Ms. Vanessa, thank you for sharing the information about the young man who was homeless. And I wish he was still here because she and I used to converse and we do see each other. But I want her to know that, and I'm sure Councilwoman Feliciano can attest to this also. As educators, we try to, um, tackle those homeless issues with all of our students. And if you do know of anyone that is homeless in our school system, there is a process for that, for getting them that help. And I can promise you that Ms. Denise usually makes sure that our students are placed somewhere pretty quickly. So if you are aware of someone who is homeless, I'm thankful that she brought it to our attention. But if we can speak further about that, so we can make sure that that student gets whatever it is that they need and any other individuals, um, in our Trent Board of Education system. So I just wanted to make that clear, that none of us up on this council, we were ever to hear about someone being homeless, we're going to do whatever we can to make sure that that person is taken care of. That is something that I've always prided myself with connecting people to resources, not just helping them for a day or feeding them or, or doing a cleanup just one day. It's about connecting them with resources that are going to enhance their future. So I just wanted to make sure, um, she knew that. And I know she just left to ask me. Thank you for being present and bringing that to our attention. Um, this is something that we definitely need to inquire, inquire about because no one goes to work to be disrespected. No one wants to be treated unfairly, and no one wants to go to work and not be appreciated. So I just want to say, thank you for bringing that to our attention, and I apologize, but I need to run. So thank you all for being present today.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, excuse me, for sticking around with us here on tonight. Thank you for coming out and being present. It's all a part of civic engagement, right? You need to be a part of the process. So for everyone that comes out, thank you for doing so. Congratulations once again to Voice State, of course. Uh, happy birthday, salutations, and congratulations to Mr. Joe. Shout out to Councilwoman Williams for putting it together and making it happen, right? As we all say, teamwork makes the dream work. This council, um, does a great job, I think, in pulling together and, and recognizing the goodness that exists in our city and propelling that forward. Certainly, we have enough other things that we can focus on. Trent is a great city. We have a lot of wonderful potential. Um, and so we just like to display the goodness that does exist, right? And that will continue to exist as we pull together. As we move towards the animal shelter, yes, that is a hot topic. Um, we are not taking it lightly. Questions have been asked about it, uh, pressure applied. We're still trying to figure out what the best solution is for this. Certainly, something does need to be done, um, to, to help in a lot of areas, right? So we need the building, we need, we need the proper accommodations, we need the proper enforcement, we need the staffing. Um, again, I said this on Tuesday night, if you do not like animals, you're going to need to work in the, in the shelter. Like, that's it, right? You shouldn't be in it. No one should be disrespecting anyone. I said, "The staff shouldn't disrespect the volunteers, and the volunteers shouldn't disrespect the staff." There has to be a common ground, right? And so we need to work on figuring out what that common ground is. People may have their favorite nonprofit that they may want to use. And Mr. Clay, thank you for bringing that up about the issue with the one nonprofit. I'm not going to speak to that here nor there, but what I am going to say is, is that if the city decides, if the director decides not to use a certain nonprofit, that is her prerogative to do that. My, my concern is, is that we do get some relief in helping there for the animals, right? That we can get a group or some people a solution that is going to help us move this so that we're not caught up with fines, that we're not putting a whole bunch of animals to sleep. But that all comes from enforcement and other, other factors taking place and playing part in all of this so that we can try to get this thing together. Um, so just know that... Your comments do not fall on deaf ears, constantly thinking about it, you know what I mean, and trying to figure it out. It's a team effort. That's the only way that that's going to, um, that that's going to work. Uh, with regard to Fell Street, I agree one hundred and ten percent. Um, there are, and I spoke on this Tuesday night as well, there are nonprofits that rent buildings, but they're paying like six hundred dollars a month. They're paying something towards it. To say ten years, one dollar, not an agreement. Um, we do have Passus Theater. Councilwoman Williams, I'm not stepping on your thunder, but I said it on Tuesday. She and I are very passionate, as well as the council members that are here, they, they do support Passus Theater as well. But Councilwoman Williams and I have spoken with Breachin' and, uh, Council, um, Director Richardson about Passus Theater and about putting something together, um, about at least for them. So I've had that conversation with her just the other day about what does that look like. Councilwoman Williams definitely is, is, um, a cheerleader for making that happen, not just because it's in the, in the North Ward, but because it's the right thing to do. Passus Theater's been around a long time, and they have, they provide wonderful services for our youth and should be, um, you know, given the same opportunity, if anything, to, to, um, to have a space, to have a lease. Let me think, what else? Saturday, I'm having my, uh, mental health conversations. Trauma and mental health, we're starting that. I'm in partnership with Assemblymember Riley, Commissioner Nina Melker, and with Director Maria Richardson. We're starting off at Calvary Christian Fellowship Ministries at Six-Eleven Parkway Avenue in Ewing. We're starting there, but then we're moving into the city with different conversations, talking about mental health, what we need, breaking the stigma around mental health, and then breaking the silence so that we start speaking up. It's okay to not be okay, but it's not okay to not say anything. So that's happening from eleven to, eleven A.M. to two P.M. at Calvary. We have a wonderful panel of people that will be coming out and speaking. First, we watch the documentary of I Been Shot, and then we get all straight up conversation about what do we need to help us, to help ourselves. So that's what's going to be happening there. And then, like I said, you'll see us move deeper into the civic training. With that being said, thank you to all of you once again for coming out. I wish you safe travels as you go home and look forward to seeing you at upcoming meetings, prayerfully with solutions and more positive things, right, rather than what we've seen. Thank you. God bless.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Good evening, everybody. Um, again, thank you all for being here tonight. Uh, I really do wish that sometimes when people express their concerns and their comments and their questions to council that they kind of stick around for us to have our civic comments so that they can hear how we want to, how we can address what they're saying. Um, unfortunately, you know, oftentimes, people leave before we get to this part in the evening, and I understand it. I get it. It's during the week, it's after work, it's late. You have to feed your kids, you have to get the kids to bed, you've got to get ready for work in the morning, what have you. Um, but, you know, it kind of defeats the purpose, you know? People come here, we implore them to come and speak to us and tell us what's on their mind, but then, you know, they often leave before we can address it. Um, but, you know, given that, I still want to address, um, numerous things that came before us tonight. Um, firstly though, um, Mr. Santana, you're on Dayton Street. I'm familiar exactly where you're at. You're by Junior Four. Um, I have addressed those concerns multiple times. You are on a major throughway going from Leila to, um, exactly to South Broad. Um, those streets, um, typically cannot have speed bumps or things like that, but we can work on maybe speed signs, you know, that, that address the speed going through. Uh, I have addressed several concerns there, maybe some more stop signs and things of that nature. But I do recall, in all the times that I was, you know, campaigning and knocking on doors through your neighborhood specifically, that was a primary issue. And now you have the Board of Education who approved another school coming into where Dunn is. So you guys are going to have way more traffic, parking issues, people coming through. So I hear you, and I'm going to be a little more aggressive in addressing the concerns exactly where you're at. So, um, when I'm done right now, I'm going to come and speak to you to make sure you have communication with me so that we can handle that, okay? But thank you for bringing your concerns to council. You are heard, and I will address those things. Yes. Um, I wanted to also, um, talk about the animal shelter, obviously. You know, this is something I speak about over and over again, and I know some people say, "Okay, animals, the animals, that we have all these other issues." We do. But the animal issue is an issue alongside these other issues that we have in Trenton. And we can't ignore one issue for another issue. We can't supersede one issue for another issue. Like, who's to say an animal isn't more important than, you know, anything else? Like, we, who are we to say that? We're all God's creatures. So I always invite and, and, and acknowledge what comes in from the animal shelter because, you know, we are the ones who are capturing the animals and putting them in this shelter and basically being captors of these animals and saying, you know, their existence is in our hands. So if we're doing that, then we should have the means to be able to provide for these animals sufficiently until we can find a home for them. And I get it, shelter, pound, laws, all of that. But at the same time, you know, at, at some point, we have to say, like, were these animals better off in the street where they would meet their demise or not, or somebody would get them? Or versus somebody capturing them, bringing them to the shelter and saying, "You know what? You have a time block of seven days." You know, at some time, we have to, we have to bring forth our, our human, our people, um, characteristics and our intuition and, you know, our spirit into this sometimes. So, you know, we have to do better. And, and yes, it's costing a lot of money. Yes, we're not equipped and all of those things. But at the same time, we have to just really, um, come together and, and brainstorm better to come up with a better solution. You know, um, you know, it's not the animal's fault at the end of the day. So, you know, essentially, we're saying, "You know what? Your time is up. Sorry. Somebody bred you, threw you out in the street, we caught you, now your time is up." We have to kind of get past that mentality, you know, or it just is what it is. Um, I'm not going to go more into that because it gets really emotional for me. Um, as far as the individuals who came to speak, um, from solid ways, from public works, from sanitation, they're doing a great job, as far as I know. I've called on these individuals from this apartment multiple times to come and clean up, um, alleyways and lots and say, you know, "You didn't pick up the garbage over here. What's going on?" And readily, they send somebody out almost all the time. And, I mean, I know they spoke against Mr. Jean Sherplee. I can't speak against Mrs. Jean. I don't know these things that were stated against him today, and that is something that they need to deal with internally. That is something that, um, Wally needs to deal with and address. Uh, I know that I have had communications with Mrs. Sherplee and, you know, told him to help or assist in this area, and he has been or sent somebody out and it's gotten dealt with effectively and efficiently. So I, but I don't like the fact of, um, you know, what's being done internally or what's being stated to be done internally, and nobody needs to work in those circumstances. So I really hope that, um, Wally will hear these concerns and these things will be addressed, um, immediately. Um, I think, um, other than that, I, I, I think I'm going to pause there, um, guys. Again, I'm thankful for you all to be here. Um, I am on the board of Kinder Smile. Kinder Smile is an organization that does, um, take care of dental, um, health for young children and families and educate parents who do not have the means, do not have the, the, the insurance, the funds, any of that. Um, they're right here in Trenton, on South Broad Street, across from Mercer County Community College. And they do have a, an event and a fundraiser with a documentary that will be at One Johnston Avenue in Hamilton, um, this Saturday from five to nine-thirty. So again, thank you all for coming out. Thanks for giving us your time. Thanks for being attentive. Thanks for staying and hearing our comments, um, and thanks for letting us know, you know, what's going on with you guys, okay? Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Harrison.
I'll be short, sweet. Um, exactly. We've been talking about the animal shelter for some time. Marge Collison-Wilson knows this for many years. I, she's been wonderful at the animal shelter, all the hard work that she's done. I hope, it would have been so grateful if the previous council would have supported Marge and the group that she believed in. Marge has been doing a wonderful job for many years at that animal shelter. And, and if it wasn't for her or her hard work, uh, I think the city would have been in a, not in a good place. So I want to thank you, Marge, because your heart's always been in the right place. What else? The city workers, I, I, you're right, there has to be, uh, people have to look in to see what's going on over there. They should have to see what is going on regarding employees and, uh, staff, management. There has to be, something has to be done. You're right, we don't need to see, um, people coming in here. people coming in here to the point that they are concerned that they're not being addressed. So I know the administration's gonna do their best with the due diligence regarding that. So hopefully we'll hear more positive outcomes from that. Tonight, we honored, um, Joe, the Mayor of Warren, he's unbelievable. It's un, it's unbelievable just to see those young men standing up there today saying that, uh, they were lost and they talk about how their future now, they have a future and they have a direction in their life. So it's good to see that those young men were able to get guidance to direct themselves forward in a positive way and, uh, their future's gonna look blessed. And, um, the last and final, I'd like to talk about, there's a next, um, Saturday, October 28th, there's gonna be the legal dumping cleanup of where it's superior alley of awful garbage. Um, 8:30 a.m. to Colorado Route 1, 1 P.M. To thank everybody on the way.
Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you very much. Uh, first of all, I'd like to, uh, welcome, uh, former councilwoman, Marge Colwell-Wilson, my predecessor and North Ward, thank her for coming tonight. And, uh, Councilwoman Harrison's right, we would be in much worse shape with this animal shelter had you not fought as hard as you did for these animals and to make sure we had a functioning shelter. And to all the volunteers who helped out, and Mr. Clay, he always comes to tell us what's going on. I appreciate what you say and I appreciate your passion with it. Uh, we have worked very hard from day one to try to find a new animal shelter site, to work with the city on it, to try to make sure things run better. And as you all well know, uh, it's not an easy process, but we are in this fight together, I want you to make sure you know that. Um, I wanna also thank Mr. Smith and Mr. Leon Crawford and the RIT, J.R.T.C. Commander from Trent High for being here to send the boys state scholars. It really is an important program. I got to visit, uh, it last summer and it's just incredible when you look out on the gem of Rider University, you see 300, uh, soon to be high school seniors organized, uh, by imaginary named towns, but they're all gonna be working together, hopefully to build a better self-government for themselves and maybe something that works after those relationships, maybe a better America, a better New Jersey, a better Trenton in the future. And I really believe that that happens. So if you know of a young man, a young boy who's going to be a, uh, senior next year, uh, in junior high school, please encourage them to apply. They would love to see if they could double the number of boys you saw tonight for next year. And there's also a girl state, and I'm hoping to see, uh, what we can do to help them get the word on a girl state, because there is a girl state too. Um, just said some announcements, and I do wanna say, uh, a couple of things. Um, so this Sunday, October 22nd, the Trenton Neighborhood Initiative Community Day is happening from 12 to 3 at Martin Luther King Junior Park at 345 Brunswick Avenue. And, uh, something that was announced earlier this week, uh, the Antico, uh, Square Skate Park Concept Presentation Design Discussion is, uh, the new date is this coming, uh, Wednesday, I believe it's October 25th, Tuesday, October 25th at 6 p.m. Uh, it's gonna be at the Rise Center, 454 North Clinton Avenue. It was, uh, rescheduled because one of the planners, uh, unfortunately, had COVID. So they are wanting to make sure that we have, uh, the word get out, have as many people as come to put an opinion on this, because this is a very, very important project. I also wanna, um, thank my colleagues and council president tonight, uh, for the reservations, of course, but also for, uh, making sure that we have a full membership roster for zoning board adjustment, because it's really, really important. We haven't had a chance to have some, uh, full meetings this year. Uh, we have, apparently there's a backup of cases that they really would like to get through. And the great important function of zoning is that it really helps guide our city and its positive development economically, socially, as well as materially. And without a functioning zoning board, planning board, things don't get built, they don't get managed properly, and we don't have smart growth in this city. Um, and I just want to, uh, regarding, say, do you say regarding Passage Theater? Um, Councilwoman Policiano is right, uh, we have been working on this for quite a while. I know this council, um, with different ways, different times, has addressed this support passage. This lease should have been done by now. And I'd ask this is, I'm not, I'd like to say it's not a challenge yet, but I'd like to ask the city to have this lease done by Thanksgiving. Let's have a good Thanksgiving. Let's make sure that Passage Theater has security for the next two years because as my predecessor, uh, Councilwoman, um, Marge Colwell-Wilson said, it really is, having worked in the arts, grants are determined on your legacy, but they're determined on how long you're gonna last in the future. They want security that the money they have is gonna be used wisely and will make sure your organization exists. And they do incredible work in the city, we need Passage Theater. Um, finally, just with that, um, so, um, Councilwoman, uh, Colwell-Wilson did make a good point. Um, when we got up and left early this evening, that's, that's on me, I should have reminded, uh, um, my colleagues, uh, we should have told everyone that we were leaving the room. The reason we leave the room, I think, is an important one. Um, you see that beautiful podium there? It's extremely heavy, it doesn't move. So what, one of the things, um, is happening organically with our council is when we offer a resolution, no matter who it comes from or goes to, we'd like to take a picture with them. And it's not for media publicity for ourselves, it's to create a memory. And, um, I don't know, when I was 17, 18 years of age, the idea of coming to a city council, speaking in front of a lot of people, some elected officials, um, and then having a picture to remember by, that would have been really neat now that I'm much no longer near 16 or 17 years of age. But that's something that's important in our lifetime. You never know when someone sees a picture on the wall and maybe carries them through a moment or inspires them, uh, to run for governor one day or do something special with their life. So if we step out of the room, um, it is to go to a place where we can actually fit a large group without a 200-pound podium in front of us. And it wasn't meant as a disrespect, but your, your, your comments are well heard, ma'am. Um, just know that we're doing the best we can, we're trying to uplift people, and I think a part of that is what we do, uh, with these resolutions and, uh, taking a photo. But thank you very much, God bless everybody, have a great, safe weekend. Please do come back because it's important to meet in person. We gotta bring community back together. Take care.
Councilwoman Edwards.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. First apologies for missing the, the entire meeting today. I did anticipate it all and going, um, so quickly, but, um, I was, you know, fulfilling my mom duties at Trent High today at the Selected Students or Selective Schools Committee event tonight for, uh, students who perform academically well. So my 3.7 GPA sophomore student was invited to this program and we sat in. Thank you. Her and about, uh, maybe 75 or so other students were invited out tonight at Trent High. So I just wanted to give a shout out to all of them and congratulate them on their academic success so far, sophomores, juniors, and seniors in high school and having been invited out tonight to speak to colleges like Columbia University, Swarthmore College, Princeton University, Brown University, Lafayette, Harvard University, TCNJ, and University of Pennsylvania, and Villanova University. Was off, or is currently at Trent High right now until 8 p.m. So, uh, the students have a great opportunity to meet with the admissions counselors and speak with them directly, one-on-one, to learn about the application process. So I'm a proud mom tonight, but also as the DA's on to the Board of Education, I wanted to give them a shout out for tonight and congratulate all of them. Um, and getting right into my comments. We, I, I'll start by saying I attended a four-sees meeting this morning, the Trent Capital City Community Coalition hosted by Pastor Taylor at Friendship Baptist Church. And I wanna say thank you to him for inviting out the U.S. Attorney's Office, who sent liaisons from the FBI in his stead to talk about the investigation of the Trent Police Department. I didn't wanna dance around this, this subject. I know it's a concern for everyone in the city. And, um, I just wanna say thank you to Mayor Castiora for, you know, fully cooperating with this investigation. It's no secret that I have protested and rallied right at the front door of the police department over the years as an activist in the city demanding accountability of our police officers. But also I've worked with dozens of police officers for many years on so many different projects around the city. So I do know that every officer is a bad officer. In fact, there's more good than bad in the Trent Police Department from my experience, in my opinion. So I want to just commend them for their community service and putting their life on the line, but also to say that it's about time. A lot of us have been calling for an investigation of this police department because we have been victims of some type of abuse or neglect or whatever the situation was that did not end in favorable result from the police department. And I just wanna say again, I commend the mayor for fully cooperating with the U.S. Attorney. And I hope that some good comes out of this investigation. And it, from the comments from the FBI this morning, this investigation will take about a year. On Monday, um, October 23rd at 6 p.m., the Department of Justice will be hosting a Zoom meeting with the public for the public to be able to submit comments and things like that because not everything is documented that we've experienced throughout this city and for good reason. A lot of the times, people are scared to come forward and scared to report things to the police department because they feel like it either, it would be swept under the rug or some type of retaliation will happen from a police officer. And that's been the experience of a lot of members of the community. And we don't wanna keep that a secret and we don't want that to be allowed to be swept under the rug. So I wanna say thank you to those who had the courage to step forward and, you know, and the things that triggered this investigation. And I will say the things that triggered this investigation was not good and it needs to stop now. And I heard that there's a 60% success rate with the decrease in excessive force from police departments across the country that the DOJ has investigated and results of their investigation too. So they, they have seen improvements. And I'm very hopeful that we will experience the same as we work on building trust in our police department and our community. So I just wanna give you all that brief update. And, um, I encourage anyone, if you have a story to tell, please come forward because the Department of Justice is here for the residents of Trenton, of Trent. Thank you and have a good evening.
That's it. So again, um, as my colleague said, I wish that others would stick around so they could hear what we have to say, um, when they have issues concerned. Um, but nonetheless, I just wanna, uh, address a couple. Mr. Rashawn has actually gone, Rashawn Santana, the newly paved streets, I believe we've addressed this before. We have, um, have, we do have a contract with PSCNG that as they are tearing up our brand newly repaved streets, that they will put it back, curb to curb. So I wanna make sure that, I wish he was here, so he would, um, was able to hear that for all those who have come out on the animal shelter, this is something that we know has been gone ongoing for years. And we are looking to get a peaceful resolve, um, with the animal shelter. I would ask that you, um, when you're coming forward to speak about our directors, that you do not come with assumptions and do not come with accusations. Um, I don't think that that's fair, especially when the person is not here, the individual's not here, to defend themselves. Um, we make assumptions in what we think is going on or what a person is doing without, um, actually having spoken to them. Um, and I don't think that that's fair. We should have direct, uh, have a dialogue of some sort, or at least have them in the room. Um, but we are working on that, that is something that is a big issue. The issue of paying $7,000 a day was not in our budget. And as we are learning to navigate our city and do what is fiscally right for our community, we have to work within our budget. $7,000 a day paid for the animal shelter along with other fines was not in our budget. And that's all I'm gonna say. We are doing our best, but we can't pay for something that we don't have the means for. That means that we're paying for that, that means we're taking from somewhere else. So I'd like for all of you to take into consideration that, that we're doing what we can do, but it is, we are, we have to make sure that our residents are taken care of. Yes, we have to take care, not after, we are doing our best to take care of the animals, but we have to make sure that we have the means. And that's the part that I need folks to make sure they're here. If we don't have it, we can't do it. Um, I'm gonna leave that right where that is. I wanna offer my congratulations to the American Legion Jersey Boys State. Um, those gentlemen were absolutely fantastic. They spoke very eloquently and I was very proud to hear them. I thank Councilwoman Williams for, uh, bringing them up and, um, giving them the opportunity to actually say something. That's pretty powerful to have them come and stand, um, before the dais. And also, wanna of course congratulate the Mayor Warren, Joe. Um, he's just a, an amazing man. He's never had a bad day. I can't remember ever talking to him and he's having something negative to say. He's always uplifting, um, and encouraging, um, for others. So I appreciate you once again, Councilwoman Williams, for acknowledging him. 60 years is way too long to have been acknowledged. Um, but I, and I wish him a happy birthday as well. Passage Theater is a staple in our community and they deserve to have a lease. Period and sentence. Um, if we're going to do something, we need to make sure that we're taking care of everybody and so that everybody has our, everybody wants to grow. Everybody wants to have, um, their organization, um, supported. And we have to make sure that we're supporting those that are also supporting us. Not to take away from anyone or anything, but Passage Theater, they've been here, they're staying, they're a staple. And we need to make sure that we show them that we are here for them as well. Um, Councilwoman Edwards came in and talked about my, uh, the fire depart, uh, police department. Um, so I'm gonna just piggyback on that. We welcome the investigation is what I'm going to say. We're not going to allow the bad decisions of a few. And it is just that, it is a few to decide to define who our city is and to define those police officers who are doing an absolutely fantastic job. The police officers have come out and they're at the schools. The police officers have come out and they're at the parks. The police officers have come out when they're called, the police officers have come out and they're taking part of events, the police officers who are out there actually playing rope. I've seen police officers jumping rope, playing ball with our students. We have really great police officers. And I don't want that to be taken away by the sneering of the few that are going to be investigated. So we invite the investigation because I want everybody to see how great our city is and the individuals that we have in here are and those who are doing things that they're not supposed to, they will be dealt with as they should be, just like if you or I are doing something that is not correct, we too should be dealt with. So I wanted to say, um, we're welcoming the, the police investigation and I'm glad that our mayor, as I would expect no less, is fully cooperating, um, with them. And we are, um, just gonna wait and see, let it play itself out. Um, with that, uh, the other thing I did wanna acknowledge, um, with those who came out from Solid Waste Department, I do believe that there is an investigation already going on. And if they, there is an investigation already going on, it is not for council to intercede. If there is not, we need to make sure if there is one that is going on. Um, but if there is one, we need to step back and let it, um, play itself out. It is not, and I think a lot of folks misunderstand the role of council. We are not here to, um, get in the middle of what our directors are doing. We could get, we go through, our mayor, he has a liaison pool. We go through that liaison and they communicate with the directors. It is not for us to go and discipline our directors. That is not a job, they don't answer to us. And I think this, the, um, community doesn't quite understand that. So I'm trying to make sure that, I tell them I like order, I like, I like, um, rules and regulations because what applies to me means it applies to everybody. And I don't believe in usurping anybody's authority. So with that, yes, we will do our due diligence, we will ask the questions, and then we will let those who are in the seats and in those, um, positions do their job. With that, I want to read the City of Trenton's mission statement, which is to recognize that the people of Trenton have made us guardians of the public trust. We are committed to govern with integrity and fiscal responsibility, to seek excellence in the city's operations, operations, and to serve all of the city's people. and to serve all of the city's people with respect and compassion. I thank everybody for coming out here. I thank everybody that came up to speak on this evening. I thank our law department, our purse department, everyone that is out here. Thank you for your time.
Madam President, if you wish, you can ask for a motion to adjourn.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
All say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not opposed, meaning adjourned. Thank you.